Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on August 20th, 2020 at 5:02 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating by video conference or telephone in accordance with the provisions of Section 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on August 20th, 2020, beginning at 5:03 PM, will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 6:15 PM. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August 20th, 2020, beginning at 6:36 PM. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony. Please join Ms. Walton in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walton. Please, anyone who's not speaking, if you could please make sure that you are muted so that we have no disruptions. And now, if you would all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Next, we will consider administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal at Bailey Junior High, Assistant Principal for Patrick Elementary, Assistant Principal for Reminzi Elementary, and Assistant Principal for Wood Elementary.
With good approval.
Okay. So I had a motion by Mr. Hogg. I believe I had a second.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Walton.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Once again, since this meeting is being held virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes if you are in favor of the motion or no if you are not in favor of the motion. Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Oui, Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Bailey Junior High, Ty Anavi Coronado. Ty attended the University of Texas, Austin, for Bachelor of Science in Chemistry, South Dakota State University for Master of Science in Chemistry. Most recently was a chemistry IB teacher at Bowie High School. Also has taught pre-AP Biology in Dallas ISD, Physics and Pre-AP Chemistry in Irving ISD, and has been a pre-AP Chemistry teacher in Austin ISD as well. Next, the Assistant Principal for Patrick Elementary is Keisha Waters. Keisha attended University in Longview for Bachelors of Business Administration, University of Texas Arlington for Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction. Most recently gifted and talented teacher at Jones Academy, has taught fourth grade math and science at Jones, third grade math and science at Jones, third grade teacher and fifth grade boot camp teacher at Rockmore, and second grade teacher at Rockmore, and has also been a human resource specialist in her past as well. Next, the Assistant Principal for Reminzi Elementary is Rochelle Hesslip. Rochelle attended St. Leo University, Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration and Management, St. Leo University for Master of Science in Criminal Justice. Most recently Campus Testing Facilitator at Reminzi Elementary, has taught second grade reading and language arts in College Station, has been a special ed K through fourth grade teacher, a third grade teacher and a fourth grade teacher as well. Next, the Assistant Principal for Wood Elementary is Ricky Andrews. Ricky attended Arkansas State University for Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, Arkansas State University for Master of Ed in Reading Education. Most recently, a second and third grade teacher at Little Elementary, has been an administrative instructional coach, a Title I reading and math specialist, and a literacy supervisor and a first grade teacher as part of her experience as well. And that concludes the appointments for tonight. At some point, we'll have a reception with all these appointments so that you can meet them. Thank you.
We will need a very large area for this reception, Dr. Cavassos. We are adding and adding to the list. Congratulations to those appointments. So now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary, Lisa Benjamin, no later than 3:00 PM, the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Wendell Bellfield is registered to speak.
Okay. See, Mr. Bellfield connecting, very good. So welcome, Mr. Bellfield. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate for open forum. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. So welcome, Mr. Bellfield.
Thank you. So just wanted to give an update again on where we stand with the Tarrant County guidelines. So these are the six guidelines that were defined by the Tarrant County Public Health Authorities. And what we show, I guess, with the four weeks of data, they want us to meet these six criteria before they would recommend a return to in-person schooling. The first one is four weeks of data showing stable or declining case counts, and we are meeting that. If you go to their website, you will see a little bit of a red bar there. That is not recorded case counts, that's a probable case count. That was requested by the Department, the State Department of Health for them to add in there. But you need to look at the blue bars, I guess. And if you look at those, we are stable and declining on there. So that one, we are meeting. The seven-day moving average for COVID-like illnesses trending lower for two weeks, we're meeting that one as well. The percent of available hospital beds that are in Tarrant County that have COVID cases, they want us to be at 10% or less, and we are currently at 9% there. They want the ISDs to have presented plans for reopening, including the elements outlined in their guide. And I heard last week that we have done that, so that one is satisfied. And then they have a seven-day average of positivity rate that they want to be 10% or less. They mentioned ideally less than 5%, and of course, lower is always better and more ideal. But none of this is going to be ideal. But so that threshold is 10%, with lower always being better. We're currently at 9% positivity rate, and the good news is we're trending downward on that. So the only one we're not meeting yet is the case count per week. And you probably heard last week about the backlog of cases that they found. Unfortunately, they plopped all those cases into one day, August 16th. And I'm trying to contact them and see if they're going to back. Most of those cases occurred in July, and so I want to make sure that they're not just... Right now, they have 1,436 cases, all in August 16th. And so that is by far and away the record for the county all year. So of course, that's not really appropriate. They should be kind of back added to where those cases actually occurred. But in any case, we're not meeting that metric yet, but it is trending downward, so that's good. So what I was hoping is if we were meeting all those Tarrant County guidelines at some point, is there... Just wanted to find out if there's any other thing we would be looking at that would prevent us from executing the plan to restart the school. Quickly looking at what other districts in the area are doing. So there's over 120 independent districts in the area, and as of today, over half those districts have students in the classroom in some form. 87% of the remaining districts have declared in-person start dates of September 10th or earlier. This includes big school districts with big schools. Everybody probably knows about Allen ISD, they have the largest school in the state, and they are resuming in-person on September 2nd. So after you get rid of all those, there's only eight school districts left that show in-person start dates later than September 10th. And then out of those eight, there's only three school districts, out of the 120-plus school districts we were talking about, that still don't know when that in-person schooling will begin. And unfortunately, Arlington's one of those three. There are other area schools that have been in-person for three weeks now, and I'm hoping we can be able to observe their outcomes and get valuable insights for how they're performing. There's also different countries that have been doing schooling for months. So I hope we're not... I hope we're being able to look at those different cases where they're opening up, see what's successful, what's not, both locally and around the world. And there's examples even like Israel that opened back up in May. They had brought their cases to near zero. When they opened up, they definitely didn't do a good job about opening up the schools, and their cases went way back up. So just want to say that to say, even if we have a very good starting point in the community, it can still go back up very quickly. And of course, the plans you're talking about are very important to sustaining, keeping the numbers down. Another thing, if you'd heard about the ten superintendents in the Houston area, they were... wrote a letter. They had a, I guess, were a disagreement with the public health officials. And they said, quote, "We must balance the important aspects of student and staff's health and well-being along with fundamental educational needs of the children using guidance from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention and the Texas Education Agency. Our school districts have worked diligently for many months to plan a reasonable return to school." And then finally, the waiver. So I read in the waiver, it says, I quote, "The school system must submit a board-approved waiver request to TDA to extend that transition window up to four additional weeks. The board must take action to authorize this waiver by specific vote and cannot otherwise delegate the waiver application to the superintendent." So again, I'm hoping after, later on in the meeting, you can let me know when that vote is supposed to occur, I guess. I'm reading into that, the clear wording that says the board must take action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellfield. Next on our agenda is our action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And the first action item is to consider a resolution to recall a member of the Tarrant County Appraisal District Board of Directors for your consideration.
Okay. Do I have any comments, questions, or motion to come forward?
President Mays, I have a motion if there are no questions or comments.
Okay. I don't see any hands for comments or questions, so Mr. Chappa, please go forward with your motion.
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, I move that the board adopt the following resolution as written. This is entitled "Resolution to Recall a Member of the Board of Directors of the Tarrant Appraisal District. We, the governing body of the Arlington Independent School District, as outlined in Texas Tax Code Section 6.033A, pass this resolution for the recall of Mike O'Donnell, President of the Board of Directors of the Tarrant Appraisal District. Arlington Independent School District cast 450 votes for Mr. O'Donnell, the last time he was appointed to the Board of Directors. Now, we, the governing body of the Arlington Independent School District, as authorized by Texas Tax Code Section 6.033B, hereby resolve and order that all the AISD votes are cast for the recall of Mr. Mike O'Donnell this 20th day of August, 2020."
Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Ms. Walton?
I will second that motion.
Okay. So I've got a motion by Mr. Chappa, a second by Ms. Walton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Oui, Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion to recall a member of the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors passed unanimously in the affirmative. Okay. Our next action item, Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And the next action item is the consideration of settlement offers for Peach Elementary School, McNutt Elementary School, and Multipurpose Activity Center construction contracts.
Okay. Do we have any comments, questions, motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Mrs. Fowler, go right ahead.
I move that we accept this motion as written. I move to approve the proposed mediated settlement agreement with Balfour Beatty for the construction contracts involving Sandy McNutt Elementary School, PH1 BP6, New Elementary School North, Project 7, PH1 BP9, Multipurpose Activity Centers, Arlington High School, Bowie High School, Lamar High School, Martin High School, Sam Houston High School, and Seguin High School.
Okay. I have a motion by Mrs. Fowler. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Next time, David, sorry. We've got a second by Mr. Chappa. Are there any additional questions? No discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Oui, Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion to consider the settlement offers for Peach Elementary School, McNutt Elementary School, and Multipurpose Activity Centers construction contracts passes in the affirmative. That was a mouthful. Okay. Next on our agenda is discussion action items. We will start with reopening schools for the 2021 plan update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. As we have been bringing every board meeting an update on our reopening plans and how we are doing in terms of preparing for that, but also how we're doing with online instruction. Today, we bring an update related to those topics, also some next steps that we would discuss tonight with the reopening plans. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Tracy Brown to take us through the presentation. Dr. Brown?
Good evening, President Mays, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on our return-to-school plan. So today, we'll spend some time talking about operation registration, give you an update to our current numbers. We'll update you on our in-person learning program with our specialized programs for special education, provide a technology update to the board, as well as provide data on the recent Tarrant County Public Health Guidance. Provide an update for you on that as well. So we'll start with our guiding principles. As I've mentioned every week, these are the five guiding principles that have guided all of our work that we've engaged in in planning back to school. Of course, flexibility and grace, the cornerstone of our work here in Arlington, by getting input from our stakeholders, making sure that we're prioritizing the health and safety and well-being of our students and our staff members, and also making sure that we are providing educational equity and excellence, access to resources, and to rigorous learning here in our system. So first day of school is behind us. We started, of course, on Monday, and we had a great first day of school. It, of course, was a little bit unconventional because most of our students, as you know, started virtually. But many of us at the senior level were able to visit campuses. You see Dr. Cavassos here on screen. But visit on campus and also peek into some virtual instruction. And we saw lots of excited students and teachers and parents too as we've engaged in our learning to kick off the 2020-21 school year. So just a few snapshots of teachers' classrooms. And we have Hale Elementary, Ashworth Elementary, and seventh grade science, our Bitmoji classroom over at Nichols Junior High School. So we've had an opportunity to monitor student engagement in the virtual learning process. We know that we can have the best laid-out plans, but if our students aren't accessing their curriculum and learning, it's going to be a challenge. And so, so far, as of yesterday afternoon, we had over 11,500 students in our pre-K2 programs who've logged into Seesaw as their learning platform to be able to engage in instruction, both synchronous and asynchronous with their teachers. And our platform for grades three through 12 is Canvas. Of course, we've had over 43,000 students who've engaged. So we are very pleased with the first few days of schools that we have students who are logging in, engaging in assignments, and moving through the modules that their teachers have planned for them. Meal distribution. So just to recap, we've... Our food services team has done an amazing job over the course of several months. As you're aware, in mid-March, we started distributing meals to our students and our community. We served over 1.4 million meals between March and the end of May. Then we served 683,000, over that number, up until last Friday, August 14th. And then on Monday, we started our new serving process, our cadence. So as you recall, we do serve meals on Mondays and Thursdays, so twice a week. And on the first day of school, we served 15,000 meals. And that is about 2,500 students on Monday who picked up three breakfast meals and three lunch meals. And we have new data today, but that's not included in our presentation. We'll be sure to include that in our next update. So now we'll talk about operation registration. As you know, we've made a very concerted effort to reach out to parents and students who've not quite registered in our system yet. So just to provide an update on our numbers, we are at about 57,091 students who've enrolled so far. You can see our projection is a little over 59,000. So we're sitting at close to 97% of our students enrolled. As far as who is asking for virtual versus in-person, that's about 60-40. So it's pretty stable from even last week, not seeing a huge shift in those numbers. Right now, for our specialized programs, as I mentioned, we have four specialized programs across our system right now. One is our ABLE, which is our Academic and Behavioral Learning Environment Students. We have our Alternate Curriculum Students, our Early Childhood for Special Education students, as well as our Regional School Day Program for the Deaf at Miller. So out of those four programs, we have about 300 students on average who are showing up every day to school. So we are also going to offer a special transfer window. It's a very short amount of time, but between September 8th and 17th, students will be able to request a transfer, or parents will be able to request a transfer to any of our AISD campuses and academies. We are still continuing to process no-show, so we don't have a clear idea of exactly how many numbers we have in each campus, but we're going to continue to process those in advance of our open transfer window. So I mentioned the concerted effort, our operation registration concerted effort. The campuses have done an amazing job. They have an operation registration task force that are working strategically to make sure we're making contact with parents and students who we've not quite seen yet in the first few days of instruction. So we're going to be engaging in home visits starting on Monday of next week. And so we provided protocols for our team members to be able to engage in, to make sure, first of all, they're being safe. Secondly, they have all the materials they need to be able to be able to share with parents, and just a real structured way of making contact. So they're preparing for the visits, making sure they're practicing safety as they're engaging in those visits, making sure their one person at a time is in the car so we don't have a lot of contact with other individuals, and just making sure those parents know that we've missed you. We've missed your student. We realize that you've not enrolled yet. We want to make sure that we're providing you whatever resources and support that you need so we can get you registered in school. So we've outlined what should happen when you get to the house, what should happen during the visit, when the visit's over, and after the visit. So if we knock on a door on Monday and a parent says, "Yes, I know, we've not registered yet, we don't have access to technology." If they're not able to make an appointment at the campus to register their child in person, we'll do it right there on the spot, registration. So our staff member will just go sit in the car, have the parent reach out by phone to the staff member, and help... That staff member can help them get registered right there on the spot. Our technology team has made sure we have access to an app called Jabber, which allows us to make contact on our personal phones, but the school number shows up. So we're able to still take care of school business, even sometimes on our personal phones. After the home visit has occurred, we want to make sure that we've summarized the visit, what happened, what are next steps. Is there anything the parent needs from the district or from the campus that we might be able to get them to help expedite their registration process? And the last part is even having a script for our team members. So when they go to the school, we have this in English and Spanish. When they go to the homes, excuse me, they're able to know exactly what the talking point should be as they engage those parents in an effort to get the students registered for school. If we knock on a door and there's nobody there, we have registration in the bag. So we basically put together all of the resources that a parent might need to register, from affidavit, residency affidavit forms to the charging of meals, immunization information they may need for their student. And they'll be able to have all of that information in English and Spanish. Again, just trying to make sure we provide every resource possible to help our parents enroll their students for school year. We're also leaving door hangers. We have AISD door hangers at campuses as well, and also brochures that outlines the campus contact information, the principal's name, the website, any information that that parent might need from that school. We're really letting them know step by step, this is what you can do to enroll. And of course, we are here to assist you if you need that. As far as technology and instructional support, I'm going to share a couple of items with you. One is new this week, and that is our Quick Start Guide to District Technology Platforms. We realize with some of our parents and students, they may be overwhelmed by the information, how to log on, how to change my username, how do I log on to ICE Station, what other resources are there? So we want to provide a one-pager, front and back, for parents, English, Spanish, we're working on Vietnamese right now. So they would have a one-pager that would be able to help them walk through the Canvas platform, how they ask for help for student technology, and how to access any other instructional resources they may need to make sure their students are successful during the virtual learning environment. And as far as requests for technology, this is a rolling number. I think Eric Upchurch would tell you the same thing. It changes probably every couple of minutes. But so far, we've had over 19,000 requests for either a Chromebook or an iPad. In general, most of those requests have been fulfilled. We do have some outstanding ones we want to make sure we take care of. And so our team is working diligently to make repairs on devices. And also, we're getting a new shipment in, hopefully, the week of the 24th, next week. So we'll be able to meet the demands for that fluid number of students who are requesting devices. As it relates to connectivity, our hotspots, we have almost 900 requests so far, and we are able to meet the demands for that connectivity. We know the technology is one part, but if they aren't able to connect to Wi-Fi, that's another challenge. We want to make sure we alleviate that challenge and help them be able to connect to the learning as quickly as possible. And the last part of our conversation today will be Tarrant County Public Health Guidance for School Reopening, which we shared with you last week. And so just to reiterate the metrics for safer in-person instruction that's been outlined by Tarrant County Public Health, and then also provide an update as to where we are right now, um, in Tarrant County. So, um, as mentioned last week, that seven-day moving average, we want the positivity rate to be less than ten percent, ideally less than five percent. Um, and so I'll share with you our updated numbers here in just a moment. We want the cases to be less than two thousand cases per week. Another metric is, um, at least four weeks of data showing a decline in case counts in Tarrant County. The seven-day moving average of those COVID-like illnesses, want that percent to be trending lower for at least the last two weeks. And then the percent of hospital beds to be, uh, below ten percent for COVID patients. And the other part of this is making sure that we have, um, a solid plan that we have submitted to, um, the county, um, for approval. And we shared with you that last, uh, we shared with you last week as well. So here's our numbers so far. This is the numbers that we pulled yesterday. So our seven-day moving average positivity rate is at about ten percent, which remains as stable from, um, August ninth, and that's of August fifteenth. In terms of cases per week, you might recall that second, uh, square there, it was a, it was significantly lower than you see right now. We were, I think I reported maybe close to thirteen hundred cases. And of course, we did share that was incomplete data. And by August ninth, we were at thirty-eight twenty with about eighty probable cases. As of August thirteenth, which is a week ago, we had six hundred ninety-three cases with twenty-three probable cases. Um, and of course, that data is incomplete and we'll continue to monitor that data to provide an updated data for, um, for our next update. The moving average for COVID-like illnesses is at two point four, um, as of August sixteenth. So we do see a declination from three point two to two point four August sixteenth. And then COVID hospitalizations, we are remaining steady, um, August sixteenth, we had eleven percent of occupied beds being our COVID patients. So in discussing next steps, where do we go from here? We're going to continue, of course, our collaboration with Tarrant County Public Health. We're going to continue to monitor and track data closely, um, with that team to make sure we're keeping on top of that. And we're going to continue our preparation for face-to-face instruction. We've been working on that for a few months now. We'll continue, um, as we get closer to making a different decision. And then we will continue the developments of scheduling options for all of our students, pre-K through twelfth grade. And that concludes the update today. I'm happy to take any questions.
And Dr. Brown, before you take questions, just a, a, a little calibration there at the, at the last slide. And, and that is that as we look at those targets set by Tarrant County and their guidance, uh, there are some positive indicators. Uh, they're not at a point that they've sustained enough, but they are positive. Uh, just, just to calibrate, because there's a, a lot of discussion around this sometimes and, and information. As those targets are met and when those targets are met, uh, it's important to also know that that's when uh, reopening can be considered with the guidelines that have been put forth. So with strict protocols, once targets are met. Uh, so that's a, I think, a key point that meeting those targets means, okay, you can now implement your strict protocols, wearing a mask, social distance, um, making sure you have entry, exit, temperature checks, screeners, all those things in that guide. Uh, and the things that we've already presented to the health authorities, the things that we've presented to this board, uh, then begin to be implemented. Uh, just for clarity, the, 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 the biggest point there uh, on those guidelines is the ability to maintain the numbers in our classrooms, in particular, the entire building, but let's just talk classroom. So the ability to have, maintain six feet of distance and organize a classroom, uh, with a few numbers and the teacher is critical. And so as we hit these targets, that's what the guidance suggests, and that's what we support, that those numbers are very manageable in the building. And so to that end, uh, Dr. Brown and, and, and staff and, and, um, task force members have been working on a potential schedule that could accommodate the numbers, the managed numbers, uh, when we hit these targets and when we can consider face-to-face instruction. So we know that, uh, just conceptually, if you manage numbers in classrooms to meet the recommendations and, and the requirements by Tarrant County, um, then that would mean that fewer students can come to school every day. And so that's where the surfacing of the concept of a hybrid schedule. And there's a lot of different interpretations, or just to be clear, a hybrid schedule conceptually is one where, uh, we manage our numbers in our buildings, ensure the protocols are, are implemented with fidelity, which is really important for our teachers or staff or community or students. And to do that, a hybrid schedule would allow for students to come to school, uh, at certain points in the week, every week. Uh, so it may be a Monday and a Wednesday schedule for some, a Tuesday and a Thursday for others, a Friday and a Monday for others. And so those things, uh, staff is, is working on diligently because, um, we do want to have face-to-face instruction. And I've said that over and over. That's really not the question. The question is, when is it safe? And how do we implement it when we hit those targets? Uh, so I want to thank the staff for their work and Tracy for your leadership there. Um, also Tarrant County, because they're, they're providing strong guidance, uh, in this as well, and Arlington Health Authority as well. Uh, but that just kind of sets some of the, the next steps, the next steps with the board, uh, in terms of, of, of this process is September third. We have a board meeting September third. That's our next board meeting. We will be bringing, uh, obviously, yeah, updated numbers and where we stand and what's our path forward, uh, with the, with the hope that the numbers will continue to improve. And so what does that mean now for our path forward? That's not, not done in isolation. That's done with our health authority and our staff, et cetera. Uh, so that there could be board consideration for really the next steps. Um, and, and so even if we continue, uh, in a hybrid or we, we start a hybrid schedule in September, that still requires this waiver to be submitted, so that, that's allowable, uh, with the, with the state. Frankly, if the numbers don't improve and we don't hit those targets in a sustained way, then that's the opportunity for that waiver to continue basically how we're, uh, how we're doing, uh, instruction today. Uh, so a lot still has to fall into place with the numbers. They're, they're trending s- a small trend, I should say, maybe not even use the word trend, but they're showing indications of, of some real progress. And, and, and that's very hopeful, uh, not only for us, but for our entire community. So, uh, so those are some, a little bit more detail on the next steps and, uh, and we certainly have a, a strong start to, to the school year with. You saw those numbers of the number of students that have engaged, uh, is very high, which means they've logged on. So, strong numbers with enrollment, strong numbers with, okay, they're enrolled and they're actually engaged with our, our staff and our, our teachers. And then strong instruction with the, with the teachers as well. So uh, very proud of, of our district, uh, and our team, uh, this, this first week of, of school. So with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brown and Dr. Cavassos. Um, do we have any questions of trustees? Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mays, and thank you, Dr. Cavassos and Ms. Brown. It's a lot of, a lot of information we've talked about every single week. Um, and I know we have lots of, uh, one-off conversations with individuals and, uh, across as we're going through. Let me, let me ask is, and thank you for clarifying, as we talked about last week, because I don't think the community's heard, you know, September third's a decision point day for us to look at numbers and see where those go through. Are we tracking? And as we get into, uh, some of these hybrids, uh, you know, I've heard alternative options of, you know, how do you send all kindergarten through third grade? Because listen, they have the hardest time online of any of the groups out there. I know we're sending our special, our special ed services. Have we considered some of those options of, you know, when we talk hybrid and such as days, or have we considered like grades, having a progressive rollout or sending them in to, to, uh, to face-to-face learning?
So, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Hogg. We have looked at those different models. Uh, and, and from our standpoint, uh, they become very challenging in a couple of big aspects, and, and then we can get into as much detail. But a couple of big aspects, because, uh, if we bring the younger learners first for a period of time, uh, there's still the social distance requirement, there's still the staffing situation, because, uh, even the facility situation. So just to kind of keep a simple example, if we bring pre-K and kinder in first and spread them all over the building because of the ten to a classroom, well, you're going into fifth grade classrooms, fourth grade classrooms, sixth grade classrooms, and they're not really equipped for the younger learners as, as one, just kind of one facility issue. The other is the staffing. So you have one teacher who is with the ten or eleven, and there's another, they split their class to another, uh, classroom. Uh, so that's one. The other big kind of challenge with that, and it really applies to even beyond the, the, the grade level span, is that we know that this will grow. So in other words, face-to-face instruction will, uh, more, more people will want to do that as we sustain an, an opening. And so to be able to serve more, uh, kind of quickly, if you will, uh, it would, would be important, I think, to build, this is again, conceptually, and Tracy's working on this with her team, but uh, to build a hybrid schedule, uh, so that we can, uh, work everyone into a schedule. Now, quite frankly, it's not ideal if you can only come to school twice a week or three times a week. That's not ideal. And it's not ideal if you have to do online instruction, right? Uh, but the reality is to implement the, the protocols with fidelity, and so our teachers can manage all that. Uh, it's to reduce the numbers and make sure we can serve, um, uh, students as they become more comfortable and wanting to come to school. Um, but we've looked at those options. We've looked at, uh, even if, if there's a, a low demand of, for face-to-face initially, uh, we do anticipate that, uh, that demand will grow quickly. And so we have to be prepared for that. Uh, so that's a long answer, Mr. Hogg, but basically the challenge with just bringing kinder or pre-kinder is a facility issue, but also a staffing issue. And then, um, also when we want to surface and, and start bringing the other, other classes, uh, it becomes real challenging, because then you have to put the twenty students somewhere, um, as we bring third and fourth graders.
And Dr. Russos, what are we doing to formally track, um, what some other districts have done going to face-to-face? You know, we are the third largest district in the metroplex. Um, wh- what are we doing? You know, listen, scale's always a item and an issue, but what are we doing to officially track some of these smaller districts that have gone face-to-face?
Dr. Brown, you want to, I, I can answer generally on that. Dr. Brown, you may have more information, but generally, uh, and Mr. Hogg, they, they, uh, for a large portion have, have done basically, uh, a slow start, transition, call it what you want. It's a, it's a hybrid where they don't all come to school at the same time. Um, the, the ones that are coming up in terms of face-to-face for whoever wants it are still a little, a little out after Labor Day that those will start seeing some of that. Um, so that's what, that's what we're seeing, that there, there is what I would consider right now moderate success in some of those that have started, uh, slow. It's really early because, um, you know, we know that, that the statistics are, you know, it's a couple of weeks after you engage in, in, in groups and things like that, that you start seeing the true effect. So I think it's a little early. We're certainly keeping track of all that, Dr. Brown. I don't know if you have additional information on that?
Nothing outside of that, Dr. Cavassos.
Okay.
A- a- and I think it's got to be a discussion point of topic on the third. You know, we've got to bring, look at that and say, take a look, and, and it does take time. You know, listen, this is, um, there's a, as we all said, there's a thousand data points and a thousand decision points that go into any of these type of decisions. A- and then let me ask the other question. Um, people, you know, the, the comment of, oh, we'll just choo- some teachers choose, some teachers, some parents choose, a- a- and I'm all for, like, I'm all for choice, but how do, are we tracking? Are we going to resurvey parents and teachers? Um, because I know when the survey comes up on teachers, it's higher as they show a smaller PP, you know, more PPE, more distancing, those type of things. Are we going to resurvey, um, especially parents and see where they stand coming up? Um, coming up in these next couple of weeks?
I- in essence, yes, yes, Mr. Hogg, in essence, yes. Uh, I think that will continue to shift and change. Uh, I think the big picture with all of this discussion continues to be when we hit those targets set forth by Tarrant County, uh, Health. That's, I think, going to be a major point in people's decision, quite frankly, in parents' decision, teachers' decisions, et cetera. When we have confidence that we're meeting those standards, uh, in a, in a strong way across our community, I think then the discussion will quickly flow into, okay, when can, when can we start activating face-to-face? And, and that's something we want to do. We want those targets to be met. We have an effect on those targets, by the way, because we're a large system. So it's, we actually have an effect and will have an effect when we open. But I think when we hit those targets, and we've said from the onset, when parents made that choice, you know, when they were registering and it was more of a survey, uh, that we're going to continue to ask them because their, their feelings from July the seventh to today, to eventually face-to-face opportunity will have shifted, would be my guess. I know that that's, that's the reality for, for all of us. Uh, so yes, continue to source that. I think really important to have, uh, a, a way to service many students in a manageable number, uh, a day, uh, and that sustain that. That's the other thing, is we want to sustain the service to our students. So if we, if a student can come or a family can come twice a week, because that's the schedule, we want that twice a week to be sustained for weeks and weeks and, and be able to keep growing into that. The numbers get better, we serve them more, and we serve at a, at a, at a bigger capacity. Uh, that would be the ideal. Um, and, and so to answer your question, yes, and on the staffing, the same thing. Uh, we want to make sure that, that our staff is, is comfortable, that teachers are comfortable. They've told us in a lot of different ways, okay, survey informally, anecdotally, et cetera, that if we manage the numbers and we're true to the protocols of temperature checks, screening, masks, the lunch schedule, the changing of classes and all that, uh, if we can hold those tight, then they feel very comfortable coming back, uh, face-to-face, and those numbers are met. Uh, so all these things work together. Um, but, but the, the good news, at least, you know, uh, kind of points to good news is that, that there were, we're seeing some progress in those numbers. And I'm, I'm just, I'm very hopeful and, and, and as we continue to sustain that, hopefully in our community, uh, we'll be having discussions about how we start face-to-face.
No, I appreciate that. And I appreciate, you know, as we had in the last couple of meetings, the transparency of what's the, what's the tracking? What are we trying to look at? You know, listen, um, data is something to be used, but we can't have paralysis. We've got to look at it and, and use it as a piece of, part of the decision. So, um, I appreciate looking at those numbers. I appreciate, uh, more importantly, the cre- we've got to creatively think, um, of how we, what we do and how we do this. So that's all the questions I have.
And one more thing, Mr. Hogg, you didn't ask this, but I, we've had a lot of conversation about this in different topics. Building into this schedule will also be, uh, customized exceptions, call it what you want, uh, for families and students and situations. We're, we're, we're have, we have to be open as a system, and I completely support that, to have to make exceptions for cases that we don't even anticipate right now. So we build this schedule and a family has X-Y situation. We have to be nimble enough to manage the numbers, but adapt enough to serve, uh, families and students the best way we can with exceptions and customization and things like that. Always trying to ensure, and this is the key, ensure that those numbers in that classroom every day are manageable and, and, and small, for lack of better words. Um, and if we can do that and have ways to adapt and customize for special situations, that, that's our, that's how we're building this. Uh, that's how Dr. Brown is leading.
Uh, that, that's essential, and I really appreciate that, because there are those special exceptions of, you know, small pods that are being run, kids that are learning together with other students to grab those, and how do we make sure they're then going on certain days? Um, and I think we all can attest, um, the hours that our schedulers, our principals and our APs are working throughout this district, because those are, listen, scheduling a school of which students are going to be there, especially when you get in secondary level, that is no small feat on anything. And then you add this other element into there. Um, I, I've, I've seen the hours they've been doing, so, uh, appreciate it. Appreciate the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Any other questions? Yes, Dr. Rush?
Uh, I, well, first off, uh, Dr. Brown, Dr. Marcello, or Dr. Cavassos, sorry, uh, thank you, uh, very much, uh, for the information. I, I echo what Mr. Hogg said as far as all of the, uh, amazing work, uh, that everybody's doing. I know the, uh, the virtual start has, uh, been, uh, challenging and rewarding for, for all parties, uh, concerned. So, uh, special shout-out to the, the teachers that are, uh, no matter how many years they've been in, it's, it's like a brand-new first-year, uh, kind of situation. So, uh, I just want to put that out there. Um, so at our meeting last week, we discussed, uh, sending a letter to the governor uh, to ask for, uh, increased flexibility, uh, et cetera. We, uh, I've developed that letter. Thank you very much for sending that off. Uh, have we had any reply or heard anything, uh, from the governor or any other school districts, uh, signing on with that, uh, initiative or anything at all?
So no formal response yet from the governor's office or the commissioner, uh, on our request. Um, I also surfaced the same request to our lieutenant governor, uh, as I'm part of a focus group of superintendents that meets, uh, virtually with our lieutenant governor to provide feedback. Uh, and so I surfaced that, uh, need to be able to do hybrid scheduling across the system. Um, and, and he was, uh, open to that consideration, no, no promises, as you can expect, but certainly open to that, um, uh, consideration. So that's, that's as far as we've gotten thus far with that.
Good. Yeah, to, to, to be continued. Uh, we'll, we'll hope for, uh, uh, good, good progress there and, and not too late. Um, so the, the numbers are looking good. So the the numbers are looking good, assuming that they continue to trend in that positive direction. You know, the third is our our decision point. With the assumption that everything does look good and and we are able to bring everybody back in a hybrid type of model, that would be September fourteenth, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a good question, Dr. Rush, so. I'm gonna kind of go big picture for for again and then come to your specific question. So the numbers are going to drive that, and that's, I keep sounding like a broken record, so I can't tell you a specific date or or things like that. Because there's a lot of assumptions that would have to go into that, so. But if the numbers trend a certain way and sustain for the period of time that is outlined. Then that's when we would shift to face to face with the strict protocols of of hybrid in this case. So there there's no clear point in time necessarily, we'll know more next week and then the following week as we come to the board. Because we'll have more numbers basically to to be able to point to. If it's clear at that point, which I I hope it will be, then we can set a point in time to to your question. You know, it's all kind of interdependent, right? So the scheduling and the the making sure that that we have the right staffing and things like that is all connected. So while it sounds like a long time from now, it's, we're we're here basically on that. And so remembering, again, reminding everyone that today we don't have the flexibility to continue hybrid. At elementary and junior high beyond the eight weeks, if you will. That's what we're advocating for, because that 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 is a sustainable way. If the numbers completely improve and drastically and all that, then then there's all kinds of different conversation about how we do school. And and I look forward to that day.
As as do we all. And what is the the timeline for families for parental notification of what that plan is? So whatever we decide on September third, i- is it like the next day? Is it, you know, X weeks or a week before that date of what the new plan would be? Are we bound by a certain statute that it has to be a certain number of days or a week? Or I I'm sure we're going to beat it anyway, but I was just curious what that would look like.
Yeah, so we hope to have a comprehensive discussion with the board about about how we can run a hybrid schedule September third. The staff's been working diligently on that. And so to be able to have a comprehensive discussion, including, Dr. Rush, to your question, when those kind of notifications would go out, when it would start. And and all all that's related to that. Again, with a big underlying assumption that the numbers will be favorable to to be able to do that. So certainly a more comprehensive discussion September third. I think I think one thing to to, I think, consider is that. The the face to face instruction is something that we all want. But it's also something that has to be driven by, as you know, and we've talked many times about this as a group, that has to be driven by those metrics. And 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 that has to be the the case, and so if those metrics don't change or those numbers don't change. Then then it makes it very difficult to 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 change right now. So again, September third and and is when we'll have a comprehensive discussion about scheduling and when we would implement that and how that would look.
All right, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rush, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Mays. I usually am a very optimistic person, but I have one issue with. If we're talking September third about, you know, good numbers and on the metrics with the Tarrant County Health Department. And then Monday, the seventh is Labor Day. And we have traditionally had some issues a couple of weeks after each holiday that we've had recently. And that. I hope we're not, I don't think we are going to lock anything in on the third. We're going to hear, is, am I correct, Dr. Cavassos, we're just going to hear kind of trends and and where we're going. But not announcing any kind of opening or or whatever this school, I'm confused about that.
Yeah, so thank you for the question, Ms. Walton, and procedurally and and the way it's set up by the the Texas Education Agency. The board would submit this waiver to to allow the the flexibility that we are talking about. So I guess that's the the best way to describe it, so to allow continued online because the numbers have not improved. Or to allow hybrid because the numbers have improved. So this period of 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 flexibility is something that the state is requiring that boards take action on. In other words, that the board requests the fact that there is a need for flexibility. The flexibility can be all the way from continued online to hybrid face to face and any any variation in between that. And that that's what this agency has set up, and so that's what we would be asking. The board to consider is submitting a waiver to allow us to have the flexibility to implement a hybrid schedule when appropriate, to continue online if it's not appropriate to have a a face to face schedule.
Thank you for that, and I am so impressed with our faculties and members and all of our administration that's been working so hard all summer long. To to give us so many different options and ideas that, because I think it, I think it's real important, I'm, I won't speak for the rest of the board. But I think it's real important that when, you know, the numbers tell us it's safe and we go back. That we are doing that with some certainty that we're going to be able to sustain staying open. Because I can't think of anything worse than getting open and then, you know, weeks later having to, you know, be shut down again. I think that would be harder on kids and families than than being careful and being sure that when we do open, we can sustain it.
Yes, completely agree.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walton. Any other questions from trustees? Yes, Mr. Willbank.
Thank you, President Mays. And Dr. Brown and Dr. Cavassos and the whole staff, I just want to applaud you guys, I know a number of my colleagues have. I think things have gone swimmingly for the most part, and I would have talked to a number of principals, staff, teachers, parents at all levels. And all of them give you guys an A plus plus. I mean, there's been a few little, an A plus, I would say, there's been a few minor hiccups, but they were minor. You know, related to technology, you know, the passwords that you mentioned, Dr. Cavassos. But I, the teachers I've talked to were amazed that the number of engagement and, you know. They might be missing out of their four sections of classes, one student that they're having trouble reaching. And the students are engaged, they're working, everyone's performing well and everything, everyone's been surprised at how well the plan is working. In terms of the synchronous versus asynchronous and the schedule, the bell schedules, a lot of work went into that, and I know, kudos. Kudos to Eric Upchurch staff, because I know they, a lot of work to go from the data in teams and populated into Canvas and have it be ready on day one. Everyone's been giving a hundred and ten percent and it shows. I've even talked to employees at other districts and they're jealous of us right now. And it it goes to the quality of our talent and our staff and the dedication of our teachers. And our students are reaping the rewards of that. Virtual is not ideal, it's no one's ideal, but you guys, I think, are doing it better than anyone out there right now, according to the feedback that I'm getting. So I again, thank you for that, I'm sorry, I wanted to be brief, but I do thank you for the one sheet, Tracy. And Dr. Brown, your slide on the technology that's very needed, I said, you know, the only thing holding me back from giving you an A plus plus. Was I fielded a lot of calls from our constituents' parents, usually the dads, who are clueless, like me. Who didn't, were looking for that one sheet of where to go on our website, either the district, on what to do to be prepared for Monday. And there's been a lot of communication, but, you know, there was just some, just small misses, but overall, again, A plus effort. That technology, one sheet was very much needed. And then the other frustrating part from principals that I'm hearing is they're fielding, you know, they're staying a lot at night, fielding questions on tech support issues from parents. And I know we have a trouble ticket system, some parents have complained that it's not easily, easy to find on the what, on the ASD.net site. And so we can look at, you know, making sure of a parent's looking for support on Canvas or anything, we can make that crystal clear where they go to do that. And also, I'd be curious to find metrics, and I don't need them tonight, but, you know, Madam Secretary, if you could make a note, I would like to request. Our 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 trouble ticket. Support metrics on how many tickets we've received and how long it's taken to close those out. And where that volume is now and how it's trending over the next next week and a half, maybe. Just to make sure that, you know, seeing the trend, we know we're going to have a big, huge spike this first week. But making sure that we're we're getting adept at at bringing those numbers down over time. So I would, I definitely like to make that request, but again, thank you and and thanks to staff. It's been a great first week, and I can tell you firsthand from my student, I'm blown away. I think he's doing even better now in this environment than he did, you know, a year ago, and certainly better than he did in the spring. He's really thriving and and doing well so far, knock on wood.
Yeah.
Trustee, will you ask for clarification to make sure we're getting the right data for you? Are you looking at tickets by a parent's tickets, technology support parents?
Yes.
That's the data you want, okay, got it.
And Dr. Brown, do you have that, or you don't have that?
I I don't know if it's broken down right now by student, I know we had seven hundred tickets this week in terms of technology requests. As of yesterday, I think Eric mentioned they had a little over a hundred requests in one day. So we can certainly get the information in terms of the length of time to close those out and maybe talk about the types of support that's being requested. We can certainly get that information to you.
Yeah, but just the perspective of of, you know, we've, the, I think, over thirty thousand devices that we've handed. There's about seven hundred, and this is, the ticket request could be for other things such as Canvas login and things like that. But just the volume in proportion to the number of students that are engaged, which is well over fifty thousand. It's a, it's a very, you know, while it's big, they're they're working those tickets and they've worked them during the weekends and stuff. So they make great progress and the volume is relatively speaking low.
Yeah, if I could jump in and add to, I I left a very important crew that worked really, really hard over the weekend, and that's the counselors too, to do all the change requests. Which is a nightmare in normal circumstances, but doing it given in this virtual environment and going from teams and having it populate Canvas. I I heard over and over again what a monumental task that was. And you guys rose to the challenge, it wasn't smooth, but, you know, it was new, so, but again, still, it wasn't smooth, but it was still an excellent job. So again, kudos to the council and staff as well.
Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. Any other trustees with any questions and or comments? Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays, I had a couple of questions about the the registration numbers and the engagement numbers. And I know that students in any normal year, we have registration running after the first day of school, on the first day of school. And so it seems like we've got over fifty seven thousand or so students registered, but the engagement numbers for this week. Shows that there's about a nineteen hundred student gap between number of students registered and and number of students who are engaged. I was just wondering if I could get some more insight into what might be causing that gap and and is there a, you know, is there some trend to to that gap? And and what are we doing to reach, I know we're doing operation registration, but what are we doing for the students who are registered but but not engaged?
That's a good question, trustee Chapa, one of the reasons why they may not be engaged is it could be a no show. And so as I mentioned earlier, we're still going through the no shows to be able to start pulling those out, so it could be a student who rolled over as a registered student, but has not engaged yet in the in the learning because they don't plan on returning. So this week, we're trying to finalize those no shows, get those pulled, that's probably the main reason. Otherwise, our our teachers are reaching out to those parents, trying to get them involved. And then the home business will be another way to be able to try to reach those who've not been able, who've not been able to make contact with, but no shows are probably more significant than the other.
Yeah, that, and and just to add a little context, the the numbers relative to the enrollment is very strong, the number of engagement, the percentage of engagement. It's just, we we quite frankly, didn't see a lot of that in the spring, early on, that was very hard to reconcile those. In other words, we know the kids are in our district because, you know, it was spring break, right? And yet the engagement, we're, we kept trying and trying, eventually got strong engagement, but that was a, that was a challenge. Kind of the flip right now, which is, which is very positive that engagement right off the bat was, is, it seems to be very strong. And so to to Dr. Brown's point, in these numbers, and that's why it's very early. You know, it's, it's interesting, in normal years, when we do head counts the first day, they're all over the place in terms of the actual counts and all that. So it's just always been a running joke that that we, you know, it's a struggle to get head counts the first day. But but the the no shows that we're processing now, and they will continue to process, do have an effect. So one can imagine that somebody registered in July and for whatever life circumstance they moved. Well, they're registered, they're enrolled, but they haven't, you know, been engaging because they may not any longer live in the district, right? But the 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 actual, you know, relative, you know, engagement to enrollment for the first three days of school, now four days, is is very, very high, which is good to see. Which means that registration, preparation, engagement, teacher outreach, campus outreach had a big effect. In connecting the kids to the learning platforms and to the to the learning, because that's where we're getting the numbers from the learning management system.
Okay, thank you for that, I had a couple of other questions and one of which is, is, and this is just more of a a general question, and y'all have touched on it, some of it tonight. But, you know, we get a lot of feedback from constituents and and, you know, I know that, Dr. Cavassos, you've been getting a lot of the same emails and phone calls that we have. But, you know, a common thing that we hear from some constituents is, well, you know, I I I said I want to be in person and I'm fine with sending my kid in person every day and and for as long as it takes. And I don't really care so much about the metrics, so aside from, you know, and and they'll say, well, and we know that there are some teachers who feel the same way. So aside from the metrics from the Tarrant County County Health Authority, which we have been clear from the beginning of this situation, that we're going to consult the experts on public health when we make our decisions. Beyond that, can y'all go into a little bit of the logistical issues with just trying to say, well, it's it's not quite as simple as saying, well, we have this number of teachers that would be okay coming right now. And we have this number of parents who are okay with coming right now, so we're just going to let them do that. You know, go into some of the the reasons why that that actually isn't as as feasible as it might sound on first blush for some of our constituents.
Yeah, and and I'll I'll take a stab at it, then I'll let Dr. Brown, if she wants to add add to that. So a couple of just quick kind of, you know, examples to that. So we we hear also, Mr. Chapa, that, you know, well, you know, at this school, forty percent want to come back or thirty five percent want to come back. Just let them come back, you know, face to face, when we hit those numbers, right? Why would you say they have to go into a hybrid schedule if those numbers at that school seem manageable, right, thirty percent? Couple of big challenges with that, because because, and again, we we're dealing with this every day, so we have, we think about these things and analyze this, but a couple of challenges with that. Number one, that forty percent or thirty five percent at that one particular campus, where intuitively a person would say, well, let's just let them in, because that that's a manageable number. You keep talking about manageable numbers. What that doesn't take into account just right off the bat is that's not equally distributed among the grade levels. So that thirty, forty percent may represent, all the fifth graders want to come back, three second graders want to come back. And so because they're not evenly distributed, it begins to quickly challenge the number in the classroom. The fact that we want to maintain a manageable six feet apart number in the classroom. The fact that we want to maintain a manageable six feet apart number in the classroom. So just intuitively, we'd say, well, that's the right capacity, let them, let them come back. That's one big challenge. The other big challenge is that, uh, that number, we have to build a schedule so that that number continues to grow. So thirty percent maybe at that one school or forty percent, uh, but that would then, uh, continue to grow. And, and if you don't have a schedule where that can be managed, then you have that variability, which then we get into staffing issues where, uh, teachers are rightfully concerned about having too many students in, in one classroom. Uh, TEA has also said things, again, they, they, I hold them, you know, kind of a little more in, in, in terms of the things that they say that, uh, to, to, it's a big state, and they say, well, if twenty percent want to come to one campus and sixty want to come in another, well, just use that other campus to move the other kids to go to the other school. And, I mean, things that are not practical. Uh, and, and at some point, this is the point I've made to Commissioner and others, at some point with so many twists and turns, we lose sight of what we're actually trying to accomplish. So you move the kids here, do this or do that, and continue to twist and turn, you start losing the effect that you're trying to have, which is teaching and learning with, uh, quality and, and effectiveness. So from our standpoint, that's one of the things that we hear in feedback is let, that, that campus come. The other thing we hear, and maybe you're not asking this, but the other thing we hear is, well, it's sixty forty. So let the forty percent come. Well, it's not evenly distributed. It's sixty forty across the system, but in some schools, it's seventy or eighty percent or sixty percent or fifty percent, which is, and again, that's not distributed, uh, equally among the grade levels. That has all kinds of variability. So imagine a teacher that, that, under that concept, all my twenty-two kids want to come back, well, there you go. There goes the protocol of, of being able to social distance. So those are some of the things that sound kind of intuitively, you know, uh, easy to accomplish that, that run into really big challenges very quickly for, uh, operations of the school system and, and the fidelity of the protocols. Uh, and that's our commitment that if we can, you know, because the fidelity of the protocols is not just for us and for our students and our staff. It actually has an effect on the numbers that we're trying to talk about to begin with. Because we're a big system, you know, with, uh, eight thousand five hundred employees, close to sixty thousand students. When it, our, our opening face to face in whatever level, uh, will have an effect if we're, if, if we're not mindful of those protocols. So those are some of the examples. I don't know if that's answering what you were asking, Mr. Chapa, but that, that's, that's some of the things we think about.
No, that, that, that's great to hear, and I know that y'all have been considering that and we've discussed this at prior meetings, but we can, it's something that we continue to hear and, and it's, it, part of it's a function of just how big of a district we are and, and how big our schools are. But, um, you know, it, it's not as simple as saying, well, we have choi, you know, the, we can, we can allow a choice and therefore, you know, we could just make it work because it seems like these two things could just fit together real easy and it, it's not quite that simple. And, and I know it's also not as simple because, um, you know, I, I, the, a good number of our students come from, in our district, come from two of the biggest hotspots in Tarrant County for, for COVID, um, which is, you know, in the, the seven, six, oh, one, oh, one, oh, one, four zip codes. And so that, that's also something that, that we have to take into consideration. As you mentioned earlier, we're so big, when we open, we're gonna have some effect on the metrics and the numbers. And I know it's something that, that y'all take very seriously. And I'm, and, again, commend you for saying from the beginning that you would follow the science on this. My last question has to do with the, the special transfer window slide that, that Dr. Brown had put up. I was just wondering if I could get a little bit more information on how that special transfer window will work? And, and in particular also, um, the special programs, it sounds like we're gonna take, uh, people into those programs. I'm assuming that we have some open spots. And, and that's not traditionally been treated as this, as a transfer, um, method of allocating students there. So could we get some more details about how applications or transfers will be handled into those campuses as well?
Yeah, and so just big picture and then we'll, Dr. Brown, if you have, uh, other details to that, but big picture on the transfer. So just to be very clear, we, we surfaced that because that's something that, that we're planning and we know that, uh, we'll have that opportunity at some schools. Uh, there are some schools that have already hit their enrollment target, and so there is technically not room, right? And so we would, we would not be able to take many transfers at some schools. But big picture on that is continuing to work our no shows. That's really important because the no shows, in essence, means there's room. If, if, uh, if they don't show up, right, if, if there's no shows. Remember, we're way over, I think, into way over ninety-five, I think ninety-six percent already to projected enrollment. Keeping in mind that projected enrollment is what we used to staff. So if we hit enrollment target, that means we have staffed and, and that, that theoretically, we've, we've hit that mark. So to the question about transfers, so first is to understand how many openings we have so that we can accommodate transfers. Uh, but that's a no show process that continues this week, next week, and into before we actually open the transfer window. The academies, for example, will have, uh, certain criteria and standards. Uh, so it's, it's not a straight transfer, and that'll all be made clear, uh, as we surface the transfer window opportunity. Uh, but this will be some, some criteria that includes sibling consideration. Obviously, language consideration, if it's a dual, dual language, uh, program. Uh, those are the two main, uh, considerations that already exist, quite frankly, you know, uh, when there are openings for other reasons at those schools. So they'll have those standards. It's not just I, I get to transfer because I want to transfer, but I, I don't meet the, you know, the sibling eligibility or language eligibility. So we'll have standards on that. Dr. Brown, you want to address any of that?
That's actually it.
Okay, well, those are all the, the questions I have, and I appreciate y'all staying on top of this and, and putting in all the extra work that I know goes unseen, and especially to our teachers. My, my two started this week and, um, and, you know, uh, it, it has been a good experience. I mean, there's been some growing pains like anything else. And, and, um, my third grader is learning a transition, a transition from seesaw to, to Canvas. And she asked me today why she couldn't just keep using seesaw and why she had to learn how to do Canvas. And I'm sure that's a question a lot of people have, but, you know, we're rolling with this like everybody else. And, and, you know, this is not an easy thing for, I think, anybody in this district, and it's a hardship for many families to varying, to varying degrees, but it's a hardship, I think, for everyone. But, you know, this is one of our times where, um, you know, we just gotta pull together and we gotta bear down and, and show some grit and determination and get through it because we eventually will. And I hope those metrics continue to work in our favor. And I'm really happy to hear that we're already planning to resume, um, if the numbers would allow, um, some sort of version of a hybrid or in-person instruction, regardless of what that looks like, um, when those numbers permit us to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chapa. Any other trustees with questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Mays. Um, I was wondering how, excuse me, how we're tracking attendance? I know it used to always be taken at, at ten AM. That's when we, we checked to see who was there and who wasn't. How is that, um, attendance being done now?
Dr. Brown?
Yes, I can take that question. Um, so at the secondary level, like a junior high, for example, um, they take attendance every period. Okay, um, high schools, again, you know, we have the ADA component, the ninety percent, and then you have for credit, so it's important that we're balancing both of those. So actually, attendance is taken, um, every period. Elementary level, it's taken three times a day at structured times. So it's not just attendance, did you log in? It is, are you engaged and are you making progress on the learning? So, um, we have very strict attendance requirements in terms of how we're checking progress. Um, we're looking every day at the number of students who maybe did not log in that day. And then we are, um, we'll start Monday sending out automated text messages to parents, letting them know your child did not log in today. You have until eleven fifty-nine to log in and make progress on the learning. So, um, we'll kick that into gear next Monday.
Thank you, and I think it's so important that they're showing that they're working. They're not just clicking in, yeah, I'm here, and then clicking out. They need to show that they are participating and that they're there throughout the day. So thank you so much for that information. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have one, um, short question, and that is, um, just based on the, time of the year that we're moving into with storms, um, tornado type activities, thing like what happened in Grand Prairie with the explosion the other, um, other reasons, uh, family members having their utilities cut off because they can't make payments. Do we have any kind of a backup plan or anything that might look different than if the kids were actually in the school building for those situations? As far as hotspots at that time, not being able to work, um, no power if they can't, um, charge up the laptops or the Chromebooks that they have? Is there any backend plans?
So I'll, I'll add that one of the things that we're exploring is, uh, instructional packets. So we are, are gonna have those for pre-K students, but, um, Dr. Wertz and his team has been looking at how we can get instructional packets in the hand of students who may not be able to have access to tech to the device at that point or to Wi-Fi connection, but just having some way to still keep them engaged. And so we're looking at resources to be able to provide those to our students who may need those.
Yeah, I, I think that, that, uh, is one. I think, uh, the hotspots is, is certainly one. Also, Ms. Mays, um, you know, and, and I won't belabor this point, okay? But that's, that's one thing that, that I've, we've, we've shared over and over is that this is a community, uh, effort. And, and if, if nothing, you know, that, that, you know, this, this pandemic has helped us understand, I think, is how important it is for, uh, city, school, county to work together, emergency management, food, uh, and meals. I mean, these things have been, they haven't been exposed in our system because we deal with it every day with the social needs of students. But I think it's been exposed at, at a wider level. And so when you mentioned displacement of housing or home, uh, you know, just being able to pay the rent, being able to, uh, have, uh, credit to start internet service as, as reduced as the internet services in some cases because of the situation. Some families still can't obtain it because it's, it's not attainable because of the fact that it's, they don't have the credit or they haven't lived long enough in their, in their home and things like that. So that's where we come in and that's where we step in. But, um, at some point, it, this is more of a community effort. So even with the CARES funding and things like that, where there is some dollar that can be allocated by the county and the city and others to, for some of these efforts, we are in very deliberate conversations with them about, uh, basically combining some funding so that we can continue the volume that we're doing with, with, uh, specifically technology and connectivity. So those are real issues that, that, that our schools face and our students and families face. Again, I commend, uh, our technology staff and our principals because as they get those requests, whether they can't log in or the device or whatever, they are on it, uh, to make sure the continuity of learning, uh, exists. Uh, and that's our, that's our primary focus. So, uh, we, we deal with those as, as they come in those situations, and we've already faced some of those situations where, uh, families are struggling, uh, in different, different ways. Uh, what we want to make sure is that we have the connection with the families. In other words, that we're able to connect with them either on the phone or, uh, email, et cetera, so that we can as best as possible access services. That, then that's the, that's fundamental. Uh, they may not be able to log into, you know, uh, the system and all that, but if we can connect by phone, which is why, again, like, kudos to technology and all that for that app that allows the, the number to be, you know, the school number when it's another phone and things like that. Because that was a big concern, you know, because people are using their, their, their phones and stuff. Uh, so those are the, the, the direct connections. Aaron Perales works with the nonprofits as well to help, uh, in that as well, um, to connect families with service.
Well, thank you for that clarification. And, um, I know that we're, we're doing a good job and we'll continue to do, whatever we need to do to make sure that that type of communication is out to the public and for P parents to understand that if these special situations, when they occur, even if they're going to be for a short period of time, our whole purpose is the continuity of educating our students. So anything to make sure that there's no gaps in there, um, really appreciated. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Appreciate you very much for that report. So next on our agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda by any trustee? Okay, I see none. So tonight, we will be considering the items listed on the agenda under consent items. Mrs. Moss, please, share bids.
Thank you, President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos. Uh, tonight we have consent item A, which consists of four bids, and consent item B, which consists of six bids, um, or six items that are greater than fifty thousand dollars. Our purchasing department, again, has vetted out these bids and we're presenting those to you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Moss. Um, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
President Mays, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Second by Dr. Reich. So a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Dr. Reich. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Ms. Walton?
Ollie Walton, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Uy Hogg, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. The consent agenda motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Next on our agenda is open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have anyone registered to, um, address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we have no registered speakers for this portion of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Benjamin. Next on the agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and, uh, I just want to thank, again, the teachers in particular for the great start to this school year. Uh, the first day of school, I was able to zoom in to about nine different classrooms, probably to the stress of the teachers, but, uh, able to zoom in from pre-K all the way to high school. And I'll tell you that, you know, it was, it was building relationships, the first day was engaging and things like that with the, with the families and, and the students. But pre-K was learning how to mute and unmute. And I'll tell you, they, they had, they did better than many adults in Zooms that I'm in. And so they, they were learning that fast and, and the creativity of our teachers is just, I, I just can't say enough. I mean, there, there was one where, there were activities where students had a little timer to go find, uh, something that the letter starts with. The, the teacher would put up a letter and the students would run in their house and try to find something that, uh, that represents a letter. I was concerned they weren't gonna come back because they would just disappear, but then they'd all come back with a timer, uh, run back into their, their space and then show, uh, that they have an apple or other things, you know, that, that relate to the, the letter that was on the screen. Uh, all the way to high school with, uh, some of our early college high school students who had very insightful questions. Uh, also with a class that, that will eventually be at our new, uh, Visual and Performing Arts Center, uh, that they'll be taking class there. So that class was meeting virtually, uh, and they were just so impressed with, uh, the design and what's coming and when they can go into that facility to, to use those resources. And so just a, a very strong start. And, and again, the teachers, truly amazing, and, and our curriculum staff that prepared, uh, and the principals that, that work very diligently. Uh, just to get a little context, you know, there's a, there, there's principals across our districts that are leading task forces as well in the summer. And they've done exceptional work, uh, leading that and providing the insight from the school, the teachers who've been on task forces. So, uh, just again, just, just very proud of our AISD team, uh, the way we've come together and, and be able to do these things. Um, and I certainly look forward to the, the time that we can start face-to-face instruction, uh, as well. So that's, that's it, just very proud.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cavassos. Um, school board, trustees, any reports? Yes, Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. We talked about the first day of school, but another big event that we had held over the weekend was our back-to-school kickoff at AT&amp;T Stadium. And virus or no virus, um, it was a huge success from what I could tell, serving about the same number of people, Dr. Cavassos? So, yes, uh, Dr. Cavassos wa- was out there. We had a few cowboy cheerleaders out there. And, um, I worked from eight thirty or eight, from about eight to eleven, um, checking people in, and the cars just weren't stopping.
Amazing group, Aaron Peralas and his team. It seemed like a logistical nightmare, but they handled it. And you couldn't, it looked like they'd been doing it that way forever. They turned on a dime, and they met the challenge. And so, again, I want to thank the staff for putting that together and providing valuable backpacks and and supplies to some of our kiddos who need it most. So again, thanks to the staff for that.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Definitely thank the sponsors and the supporters and the nonprofit groups that are providing services for our students, whether it's dental, eye, whatever. Absolutely thank the community for being fully involved. Thank you for that report, Mr. Will Banks. Any other trustees with reports? Okay, I didn't say this, but I do want to say when Dr. Brown was was going through her presentation, I mean, Operation Graduation, what we, you know, used to kind of know of, or we had the opportunity to go out and go with the staff to the schools and tell the kids, hey, you know, come back, how many credits you have? Just that opportunity to be involved, and I'm just, I really miss that. So there's, there's just a lot of things that that we miss, and that definitely is one thing that I do miss, is to see the parents' face or the students' face when they say, oh, that's all I have left to do. But even just going out and and checking on the students for enrollment or re-enrollment, I just, I think that's awesome. So just another one of the things that I miss for the moment. I know that that it will come back and be the same. Okay, so with that being said, Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, ma'am. We have had a request that the board would like a report on the technology help tickets that parents have submitted, metrics of how many were there, how long does it take, did it take to close out the ticket? And kind of how the trend is going over the next few weeks until our next board meeting. And also the type of support requested was another one of the metrics.
Very good. Thank you.
Keisha, I think you're on.
Okay. Twice. Thank you. It is 8:07, and at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Everyone, have a good evening.